Okay, we're streaming now live on YouTube.
Standby.
All right.
And here we go in five, four, three, two, one, and we're live.
Good evening and welcome to this, the September 28th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Munroe is absent for the record. Councilmember Comer.
I'm here.
Right, Councilmember Comer.
You're on mute.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. Very good, thank you. So let me go over the notes for tonight. Due to feedback and delay within the meeting platform, I will be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Please mute your microphones and follow along at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Participation in tonight's meeting, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few moments to explain the process that we'll be using during this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. Members of the public can participate by submitting public comments through YouTube or the Zoom Q and A feature. Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city of Livermore website and on this agenda. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person per item. Comments should be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. Items received prior to the meeting using email or the Google form link on the city agenda were provided to the city council and the public as a supplemental packet before the meeting. And therefore they will not be read into the record, however, rest assured that the city council members have seen the comments and have read them and will take them into consideration. So with that, I'm going to begin the meeting, we have the 2.01. These are the city councils will be approving the appointments to the advisory bodies. Congratulations to the following individuals. The oath of office will be scheduled with the city clerk's office for a future date for the airport commission. The appointment of the following individuals, Greg Chabrier, Christopher Dombrowski and John Levine. For the beautification committee, we have Susan Jusko, Commission for the Arts, Glenn Kaminsky. The Human Services Commission, we're going to be reappointing Rovi Lynn Antonio. And for the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, this is a reappointment of the following individuals. And this is a joint effort by the, by the Park District as well. So the Evelyn Arroyo, Minha Kawamura, Elizabeth Ludwig, Amelia Nelson, Daphne Yan. And the appointment of the following individuals, Tandvi Sri Sai Panuganda, Tony Neko and Heather Mackey. So with that, may I have a motion to appoint the applicants to the respective advisory bodies?
I'll move, make that motion.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Coomer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carling. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Comer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Moving on to the citizens forum, these are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can either deliberate nor take action, but could also take these up at a future date. We did get a, an earlier submission from Jim Machanick regarding the Levian bike path on or behind Forest Glade. Do we have any other items for the citizens forum?
No comments have been received.
Okay, but we did receive Mr. Machaniks and those who will, that'll be brought up. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Is there anything that anyone wishes to pull from the consent calendar for, for consideration or for discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull 4.08 and 4.10.
Okay. We did get public comments from Stephen Dunbar and Andrew Barker on both of those. So I will entertain a motion for 4.01 through 4.07 and 4.09. Do I have a motion for those parts of the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Coomer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Comer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, a discussion for 4.08, that is the construction of the active transportation plan bike lane improvements. And 4.10, that's the traffic calming. Councilmember Carling.
Do we want to, we're going to listen to comments from the Mr. Barker and Mr. Dunbar first, or do you want?
Well, tell you, we could, we could have a staff presentation on 4.08 first with comments and then 4.10.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Paul Spence, who will introduce the staff person who's going to tell us a little bit about 4.08.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. We don't have a presentation per se, but we can walk you through some of the details and then respond to any questions from you or from the letter from Mr. Dunbar. And we have Bob Vin from our engineering division who can walk through this for us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening, I am Bob Vin, your Assistant City Engineer. Item 4.08 on your agenda tonight is execution of an agreement with Golden Bay Construction for construction of the 2020 Active Transportation Plan Bike Lane Improvement Project. This project would install buffers and some additional safety enhancements along approximately two and a half miles of First Street, both directions. So that's the total bike lane length. The project was advertised and bids were open on August 18th. We had three bids, so the lowest responsible responsive bidder is Golden Bay Construction. Their bid amount was $238,674.70. And staff recommends that city council award this project to Golden Bay Construction and authorize city manager to sign the agreement.
Okay, well, thank you. Questions at this point? First, we did get a couple of comments on that. So I will refer those to the city clerk. We have, we did receive those ahead of time. I'll ask the question, should we have those read into the record? Or do the council members have sufficient information, having read through those comments previously?
Well, I personally think I have sufficient information. I have some, some questions based on some of the comments made by Mr. Barker, Mr. Dunbar and Mr. Campbell. I think we also got an email from Mr. Campbell, Dave Campbell as well. So if I could
Certainly.
summarize some of those things and point out some concerns I have as a cyclist as well. And I'm going to start with the corner of First Street and Mines. There are quite a few cars, and this happened to me today when I was out there again. Quite a few cars that use the bike lane as the right turn lane. And I'm wondering if there's a way that that can be designed to prevent cars from squeezing me as I'm waiting for the light to change, squeezing between me and the cars that are going to go straight on First Street and not use the bike lane as a right turn lane. So that's a question.
Well, I believe the California Vehicle Code allows bicyclists to enter, I mean, excuse me, vehicles to enter a bicycle lane to make a right turn. So I'm not sure the city has authority to stop that and it would be unusual. But we have designed some safety enhancements with the project for that location and others along the corridor where we would be installing green paint in the transition area and some additional signing to help make motorists aware of the bicycle kind of merge weave in that area. It's similar to other right turn treatments that we would have.
But there are other right turn treatments where the bike lane is between the right turn lane and the lane that's going straight ahead. Like at Jack London and Isabel.
That's correct.
Well, right at Mines and First Street, going northbound on Mines right there, it is set up that way.
Right. I find it very dangerous and I think we need to reconsider what that intersection looks like for cyclists. Because there, like I said, there are plenty of cars that try to squeeze between the curb and the cars going straight and using that as a right turn lane. Let's see, another thing brought up about reducing the lane width from 12 to 11 feet to give more buffer space for bicyclists on both sides of the street. There's any comment about that there? I mean, it's 11 feet some places along First Street and then goes back to 12 feet at, well, near the corner of Mines and First Street again.
So we do have lanes narrower than 12 feet at certain locations, particularly at pinch points where, you know, you kind of don't have a choice. But on the arterial streets with high traffic volume and particularly in commercial areas with a lot of truck traffic, your staff recommends that we maintain 12 foot lanes. So although some arterial segments, we would certainly consider narrowing the lane width with a project such as this. You know, neither your city engineer nor traffic engineer recommend that out here on First Street with this project.
But isn't it 11 feet before you get to Portola?
There is a narrow section between Portola and Scott Street where the, we don't have full improvements. The development on the south side, you know, doesn't have the frontage improvements in. We expect that to redevelop and add in separated bike lanes, something similar to what was put in, in front of the Auburn Grove development.
And why, why do you start at Portola and not before Portola? Because the bike lane be prior to reaching Portola is much worse than the bike lane from Portola to say Safeway.
Are you talking about the section between Auburn Grove and Portola?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the project was to add buffers to the bike lane. And that section is, because the south side hasn't redeveloped, if you will, and the curb isn't in its ultimate location, the, there's not enough width to add a buffer there. We already have narrow lanes and we already have a fairly narrow bike lane, as you're aware in that section. So it would require widening the roadway.
Right, but I mean, from the development point of view, the beginning at Portola where that old vacuum cleaner place is, there's no, I mean, that isn't permanent either. At the bike lane there is much better than it is before you get to that point.
So I believe if we, Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we wanted to go from Portola further to the west, we'd have to acquire property from the adjacent property owners, is that right?
That's correct. And widen the roadway.
Councilmember Carling, is the question about the condition of the roadway or the width of the bike lane?
No, the condition, the condition of the bike lane as it exists today.
So essentially that it is, that it's, the surface is rough in that area.
Yeah, I mean, there are tree roots that have, that have raised the bike lane, for example.
So Bob Vin, the question is sort of where does, where does that section fit on our resurfacing priority list? Since it wouldn't be there, basically at a buffered bike lane, but it might be there to ultimately deal with a rough surface.
Right, so a lot of First Street is in fairly good shape. So I'll have to take a look at that one section, but it's possible that we might be able to address it with this project if, you know, it's adjacent and is similar work. So if we have enough budget, I don't see a problem addressing that.
My last question is going westbound on First Street at Portola. I mean, that's admittedly, it's a badly, I suppose, a badly engineered right turn there onto Portola. But nonetheless, I don't see, it's pretty unsafe for cyclists that want to continue straight on First Street. Is there a way to address that at all?
That's the free right turn, correct, that you're talking about?
Yeah. So cyclists would have to cross people turning the free right turn on the Portola, they'd have to cross the traffic there.
Sure, so that can be addressed and typically the way that's done is you kind of take away the free right turn and make people turn right at a tighter radius intersection corner and it would stop at the signal, like the through traffic. So that would be a capital project that we could look at potentially adding in our CIP.
And Bob, is there any possibility of adding some pavement markings there to signal to drivers that there is sort of a weave going on between the bike traffic and the car traffic at that location?
There may be, that might be a place where we could add some additional signing, pavement marking or green paint. So we'll have to look into that.
Thank you.
So let me ask the city manager then, how, I mean, at this point, I'm not in favor of moving forward with this until I feel better about some of the issues that I've mentioned here. Particularly around safety for cyclists. I mean, I, the quality of the bike lane is less, I think it's important, sure, and I agree with that part. But I think the corner of First and Mines is problematic. And I'm also concerned about westbound on First Street on the Portola. So I guess I'm looking for a suggestion. I mean, at this point, I'm not in favor of moving forward based on my concerns. I maybe I leave it to my colleagues to make a motion and we vote on it. But I just, at this point, I'm not in favor of moving forward. I'll leave it at that.
I would as well like to hear that we could come up with some solutions. Those are two brutal intersections. I've crossed them both in my, you know, mostly the westbound version of it. And it's dangerous in a wheelchair, trust me. And I can't imagine how we can make it safe without some actually getting, getting down and getting some more work done to see how we could make it safer while preserving the right turn lane. Because there are a lot of cars using that, that lane. So where, where does the, where does that meet?
Okay, well, is it the pleasure of the council to pull this item for additional consideration?
I would.
Have it come back to us?
I would do that, yes.
I would agree.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, can we just pull this, do I need to put it to a vote?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend you take a vote to table the item and give direction to staff as far as the information you want to, and additional information you'd like to obtain, so it can return to you to make a decision.
Okay, great. In that case, Councilmember Carling, would you care to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move the table 4.08.
And I'll second it.
And that is to gain additional information on safety at those two previously described intersections.
Correct.
Okay, we're clear on the motion. Vice Mayor Warner.
I just, I think what I heard the city attorney say is that we need to be a little more specific of what information needs to be returned. So I think, I think a little more clarity on what it is that will sat, be satisfactory.
Okay.
Some info on something or other, but.
Well, for me, it'd be the, the what, two intersections, one first and mines. And how we can make that safer for cyclists that are trying to go straight as cars are trying to turn right on both going east and west, as well as westbound First Street at Portola. How's, again, cyclists wanting to go straight on First Street toward town? How do they avoid the traffic that as Councilmember Cooper pointed out, frequently are turning right on the Portola and sort of doing it at speed? Because it's not a, it's a very gradual turn, as we all know, and not a hard right. I guess I'd also like to understand why clearer definition or description about why we're not improving or restriping the bike lane from the new apartment development on the south side of First Street up to the light at Portola. I mean, that particular stretch of bike lane, from my point of view, is much worse shape than the bike lane that we were going to improve and stripe and so on from Portola toward 580.
So I, if I could, I'd like to suggest, rather than saying, why can't we do it? Why don't we direct that we come back with how we will do it?
That's fine.
So I would, I would suggest that, and I was also wondering, and maybe staff could answer this. I mean, it's possible for us to approve this with the conditions that those requests that you just may be met. Isn't that another way through this?
Absolutely.
So I would, I would like to suggest that we don't table it, that we approve this, so we can move forward and get something done, which I think is important to do. And then add the additional work as requested, that's what I would do here.
My concern is, is that they've bid on a project that doesn't include this. And I think that what in particular, the issue of, from my point of view, anyway, the issue is the two intersections is probably bigger than
Sure.
Than anything that they've considered in terms of the bid.
Right, but what I think we're talking about perhaps is not an or here, but I think we're talking about an and. So that we want to get done what is in this plus some additional work. So we have a bid for the work. And what you're basically in my mind doing is a change order to increase the scope. So what I would do is approve this with the requirement that we increase the scope and get those other requests done as well.
Vice Mayor Warner, this is your city attorney Jason Alcala. We can look into that. The public code may have a say about how much you can add to a project without changing the project. But that doesn't mean we can't come back to use the city council for another project to do additional work, should it be of that magnitude?
Right, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't believe that we're saying we don't want to do what's in this project. I don't think there's anything we don't want to do here, unless I'm mistaken. But that we want additional stuff to go forward. So what I would do is approve this scope of work and then get the additional work done. Now, the resurfacing of that one part of the bike path, I think is, I, from what I heard of staff report, it's easily done within the scope. Cause it's similar work, but these other two intersections is maybe more. And let's just get them done, but let's not hold up this work as sort of a hostage, getting the other thing, you know, let's just get this done. So I do not think we should table this at this point, but I think we should pass it and then ask for additional work.
What's the pleasure of the council? I, I think it's a very elegant solution.
Yeah, I understand his point. I don't think we should pass it because I think it's, I think we're just going to paint lines down on the, on the, by the intersections and then we're going to wait and wait. And I don't think we should pass it the way it is.
I, I understand you're saying if we pass this, we won't do the other work, we'll just wait, is that what you're saying?
I have no, how will we know when, if and when we'll get it done?
Well, what I'm saying is, I just want to be clear, it sounds like you're holding this project hostage until the other work gets done. And I'm not.
That's your worry, that's not mine.
I think, I think what we're looking at is that they would feel more comfortable if all of the work was done at once, rather than, I think the concern is that we're going to get some of the work done and then the rest is just going to languish.
It's dangerous now and putting more stripes down there, I don't think is going to change the danger of that intersection, one iota.
Okay. With that, without repairing, without fixing those, at least those two intersections, we still endanger bicyclists every day. So that's the part I'm thinking about it is that we, there, we can do this other work. It won't enhance either intersection that needs to be enhanced. I'd rather it all come together as one project. I don't know how we'll, if or how, we'll need to go back and have it rebid. I don't know, I don't know if we can just add it on to that with the extent of changes that may need to, may may need to be changed, made. And would really like to see some staff work on this before we move forward.
Can I, it sounds like there's additional analysis that needs to be done and that will, that will delay anything else that, that, that will happen.
And I, I'd just like to have staff comment on how quickly, if it's quickly to get these other things done, bid it all together and get it done. I'd just like to know what we're talking about or, and how does that compare with getting this done and then adding the other work? I mean, we're making assumptions here without information, actually.
So this Paul Spence, the, the work on the striping as to the, the pavement condition on the bike lane and the right turn at Mines Road are, I think, probably easier fixes. They would both require a augmentation to the budget, but those seem more straightforward. The one at Portola, that gradual right turn is a more challenging fix and would have to be designed that I think could, could slow this project down if it needed to all happen at once.
So if it's, if these changes to the back bike lanes are not compelling or important to do anytime soon, then I agree, let's delay. But I just, intrinsically, I don't like delay of this kind when I know that those projects can be separated and accomplished.
Well, I'd be happy to table it with additional information coming back regarding Mines and First and the additional bike lane improvement between the, the new development and Portola, leaving the Portola and First Street to a later date. And I understand from Mr. Spence that that would be something that would be, you could report back to us in a reasonable length of time?
Yes.
So if I understand that, that one intersection is the more problematic, takes longer. Why can't we pass this with, again, proviso, we do that other work you requested, except for that one more problematic intersection?
Because I want to hear what they're going to do with Mines and First.
Hey.
Cause I think that's a dangerous. Cause I think that's a dangerous intersection, and if it's something they can look at and get back to us in a reasonable, like, the time, I think it's worth it.
Okay, so the idea is that you delay all of this work and then have the staff come back with additional information and add it to the current scope of work and then have it done all at once. Is that the, uh, thrust of the motion?
That's my thinking, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, uh. Vice Mayor, any more comment?
No.
Okay, uh, in that case, uh, I'm going to vote on a motion to table this, uh, until staff can come back with additional information uh, on adding to the scope of work so that all of the, uh, work originally proposed can be done in addition to the work that needs to be done at Mines and Portola. That, get the, uh.
And the additional bike lane work between that new apartment, townhome development and Portola, so to the west of Portola on First Street.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Uh, is the motion clear to, uh, to staff?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Rick Cumber.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
No.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, it passes, uh, three to one, uh, on to, uh, four point one zero. This is the, uh, traffic calming, kind of a related.
Yeah, the one question I had to staff was that, um, in the staff report, you, you allude to selecting the top location, which, uh, from the chart is Arrowhead, and my question is, does that mean Arrowhead's the only street that would get traffic calming? Because, and the reason I'm thinking that or wondering about that is if, if you do traffic calming on Arrowhead, won't you drive everybody to Central, which is just a block over?
Honorable, uh, Councilmember Carling, um, both of those, uh, streets are parallel to each other. They are both on the list. They're both priorities. Um, and so in that particular case, uh, even though the funding would be about, uh, for about a street a year, we would group those two together. So in other words, that, that we wouldn't end up, uh, um, with the actual timing of that, trying to drive, uh, folks from one local street to another.
Okay, that was really the only thing I wanted clarity on. Thank you.
Very good.
And we did get, uh, comments from, uh, both the, uh, Stephen Dunbar and Andrew Barker on, on this that were taken into, uh, consideration, considered by staff. And I certainly appreciate the way that staff has, uh, reached out to work with the, the residents on, to address their concerns. Uh, any further comments, uh, on our questions for four point ten? Uh, do we have any public comments, uh, other than the ones we've already received?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period and, uh, bring it back to the council. What's the?
I'll move approval of four point ten.
Moved by Councilmember Carling.
I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember Coomer. Uh, any discussion on that motion? A roll call, please.
Vice Member Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi, thank you. Uh, since we were considering, uh, the bicycle lanes, uh, and the traffic calming, let me just sort of ask a question of staff. Uh, there was a question regarding, uh, the, the levy and the bike path, and since we're on bikes, that's why I'm gonna ask the question. Uh. What is the, uh, 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 what's the status of that project? Is that an area that's under the, uh, responsibility of the city? Uh, Zone Seven, the Park District? Help me on that.
Honorable Mayor, um, a little more clarity on exactly the area. Is this the area behind?
I'm sorry, it's the area behind Forest Glade where the, uh, uh, levy was washed out during the most, the more recent floods. Uh, there's a bike path and a levy that were washed out.
And as you are, you are right, that is a checkerboard of different, uh, ownerships, but I believe our city engineer, Sherry Sheets, uh, has a little more information on that.
Yes, uh, Mayor, the, uh, area you're speaking of, the pathway itself belongs to the city. Uh, Zone Seven is actually responsible for the, um, floodway and, uh, property itself in that location.
Okay, and do we have any sense of what, uh, uh, what the timeline is on that, uh, what the current status is?
Uh, so the repairs were bid and I, uh, they should be completed, uh, with this round of storm damage, uh, repairs. Um, the, uh, uh, so the riprap, I believe, has already been installed, and there's a railing now that's, uh, along that edge. So the riprap had to be extended. Uh, the immediate repairs were not far enough to prevent, uh, additional erosion. So it was extended both downward and, uh, linearly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Other questions, comments? Okay, great. Uh, we have no public hearings, uh, tonight, a five-point, uh, series. Moving on to six point oh one, this is an oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID nineteen emergency.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mark Roberts, your Director of Emergency Services. In addition to being your city manager, um, we've got a few things for you this week. Um, case rates in Alameda County and in, uh, City of Livermore continue to be stable and slowly trending downward with both Alameda County and Livermore now below, um, five new cases per day per hundred thousand population. Um, at our last update, we had eight hundred and eighty-seven cases in Livermore. Um, last week, Alameda County advanced to the red tier. You'll remember the four-tier system with purple being the most restrictive and red actually being better than purple, uh, being less restrictive. The county did not, however, immediately adjust the permitted uses, but is monitoring. They wanted to make sure, um, that especially after, uh, the recent Labor Day holiday, that there was not an uptick in cases. Um, they want to avoid at all costs having to go backwards because of, uh, opening things too early. Um, they would much rather, uh, be slightly more cautious and be able to have the openings stick. Um, we do expect, uh, that if over the next, uh, ten days or so, that, uh, the case rates, uh, and other indicators remain stable, um, that the county, uh, will, uh, allow additional openings consistent with those that are in the red tier. Our COVID nineteen prediction models for Alameda County continue to show that our transmission rate is below one. Um, and that, of course, is very positive because a transmission rate below one, uh, means that our, uh, each person who is infected is infecting fewer than one person. Um, so that means that we are on the, the road to going in the right direction. We are having decreasing, uh, numbers of infection per day, if that holds over the long period. Beginning to bring students back for in-person learning continues to be a county priority. Um, they, uh, the county has promised additional information, uh, to be available in the coming weeks. Um, they've noted that, uh, the first groups that will likely be targeted, uh, included, uh, specialized groups that have either special learning needs, have additional hurdles, um, or, uh, can benefit, uh, in particular from in-person learning. Um, but the county staff has noted, um, that as they are, uh, prioritizing between, um, various, uh, operations to, uh, open up that in-person learning, uh, is at the top of their list. This last, uh, week, and in fact, actually today, uh, I signed, uh, three revised orders. Um, the first of those dealing with, uh, temporary evictions, especially on the commercial side. You'll remember that our residential evictions, um, are patterned after Alameda County and follow their ordinance, but in the case of commercial evictions, um, we have our own local ordinance. The state of California last week, uh, passed authority giving, uh, local agencies the ability to, uh, adjust their orders. And so I have extended our, uh, temporary order till, uh, December thirty-first of twenty twenty. Of course, uh, this order will return, uh, at a future meeting for city council confirmation. Delivery fee regulations, uh, was previously, uh, approved by the city council and confirmed. Um, and, uh, with the, uh, phased reopening of indoor dining, um, we clarified, uh, that regulation, uh, that the delivery fee regulations will apply until interior dining is permitted at a hundred percent. You'll recall that the various tiers, um, allow as little as twenty-five percent of capacity indoor dining in the next tier. Um, so we wanted to make it clear that until, uh, indoor dining is back to its per, full permitted amount, um, that the regulations would continue for delivery fees. And then finally, uh, the temporary waiver of fines, uh, and fees, uh, is, uh, that the city had done for our transit occupancy tax and the various services that we provide directly. Um, this was waiving of fines and fees for those who were unable to pay the, excuse me, pay the, uh, the required amount based on the impacts of COVID nineteen or related governmental regulations. Um, that, uh, I extended to twelve thirty-one twenty. So essentially, all of our, uh, economic, uh, related items, uh, including, uh, the evictions, uh, the waiver of fines and fees, uh, and of course, uh, fee increases now are aligned at the end of the year. We will continue to monitor that. All three of those items will come back to the council for their consideration and confirmation at a future hearing. Your small business grant program, um, continues, uh, are, we're processing on that. We have eighty-eight applications for that. The first group, uh, of approvals have now received their check. The second group of approvals is in process. Um, we go through each of those individually. Um, we had a number of folks, uh, essentially for about half of the total applications, a little bit less than that, um, that were, uh, targeting ineligible expenses. You'll remember that the expenses that the council targeted were things that allow a business to, uh, change or adjust its, uh, patterns in order to be more effective during COVID nineteen. Um, but ongoing expenses like rent or paying employees was not part of this program, although, of course, we know that we're state and federal programs more directly targeted at those items. Um, so that continues, uh, the processing of that continues to go well. Uh, we continue to process a large number of, uh, tent applications for outdoor activities, primarily restaurants. Um, and so we will continue to do that. Um, if folks have not come in and gotten their permit, it is required. It's a no-fee permit. But we do want to make sure that those tents are safe. Um, it takes a, a lot of weight to hold those down, especially when we, we'll start to get wind here in the fall and early winter. So we want to make sure that those tents not only perform that, the, uh, function that we want them to, but that they remain safe. So we're continuing to work with, uh, all of our folks, uh, both downtown and throughout the community who have erected a tent, and, uh, anybody who's interested in that can contact our planning department directly, uh, about what the rules are, and our building folks, uh, can help them with exactly what the specifications are for, uh, having the tent be made out of the proper materials, as well as having the appropriate tie-downs on there to keep everything safe. Um, so your staff, uh, continues to monitor, uh, a variety of items. The last adjustment that the county made in the last few days um, was to permit nail salons to operate indoors, uh, and so that, uh, on September twenty-second, uh, the state changed, uh, their rules, and then the county followed. Um, so essentially, if you have been waiting to get your nails done indoors, um, like many of us, um, that's now a legal activity in Alameda County. Um, so that item has changed as well. Um, we continue to, uh, to do overall monitoring of the situation. The last item that we're getting questions on now is, um, Halloween, and so, uh, the county, um, uh, during the last couple of days, did issue additional guidance on that. There will not be any, uh, additional rules or, uh, or orders on this one. Um, this is essentially giving guidance to help people minimize the, the risk, and of course, um, they follow all the rules that we're aware of. Um, interacting with your family group or in your small pod, uh, is the safest of things, so activities, um, that relate to that, uh, keep it, uh, the, the safest. Um, moderate-risk areas are participating essentially in one way, trick-or-treating, where individually wrapped goodie bags are lined up for families and grab-and-go. Essentially, while it's an outdoor activity, um, the grouping together of large groups of children or adults as they travel from house to house, and the actual traveling from house to house is where the danger, uh, occurs on that. So, um, essentially minimizing that contact, contact is particularly important there. And of course, um, large parties, large gatherings, indoor gatherings and other things, of course, are prohibited. Those are consistent with the county orders that already exist, and it's simply a reminder to be safe during the holiday. So the city will not be, uh, taking additional steps in here. We will be encouraging uh, people to become familiar, um, with the recommendations of the county on this. This is not just Alameda County, it's the entire Bay Area. The health officers have issued this uniform guidance, uh, and, uh, trying to keep, uh, everybody safe as we, uh, go through the celebration of, uh, Halloween. So with that, um, I'm available for questions.
I understand that this year, there are going to be a lot of trick-or-treaters dressed as, uh, doctors, nurses, and ninjas are also, uh, I understand, very popular, since, uh, they all have the, the face masks. Uh, you mentioned that our transmission rate is below one. Uh, how does the mask compliance going? Because that seems to be going hand-in-hand, that as, uh, uh, people are wearing the mask, transmission rates are going down. Uh, what do we see? I, when I'm in the downtown, everybody's wearing masks, and that's, uh, that's heartening. I think that may be contributing to the, the, the low transmission rate. What, what, what is, uh, the rest of the staff seeing on that?
Every weekend, uh, and actually throughout the week as well, we do have, uh, staff from multiple departments in the downtown, from neighborhood preservation and your police department. And we actually are finding, uh, especially in the afternoons, uh, early evening, even into mid-evening, uh, mask compliance is, is very, very good. We've been working for the past few weeks on mask compliance in the later evening. You'll remember that businesses throughout the community are allowed to be open until eleven P M. Up until sort of the end of the traditional dinner hour, at least for those of us here in the United States at about nine o'clock. Um, the, uh, compliance is actually very good. Um, as we move from nine until eleven, that is where we've had some challenges. We've been working with businesses, uh, throughout the community, um, and actually have made some improvements. Um, two challenges there. Um, one is that by that time of the evening, um, patrons have sometimes had, uh, more than one drink. And so the consumption of alcohol and the compliance with social distancing and mask compliance, uh, essentially are, are inverse. So the more you drink, the less compliant you, you happen to be. So we're making progress in that area as well, although not quite as far as we need to. Uh, but you are correct, uh, our mask compliance, uh, uh, on all of our retails, uh, retail areas from downtown to the outlets to our big box and, and medium box retailers, uh, is generally very, very good. Uh, ninety-five percent plus, um, and even in downtown, uh, certainly through most of the hours of the evening, we're doing very well. So pleased with our progress so far. We still have a little bit of work in the later evening hours to do, and we'll continue to work with our downtown businesses on that item.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, uh, for, uh, the city manager? No? Great, excellent. Well, uh, uh, getting into the red, uh, zone was, uh, does a great, uh, very heartening step. I know a lot of people were looking for, for nail salons and, uh, getting their, we, we've been able to get our haircut for the last couple of weeks. Uh, but nail salons, uh, are also very important because people need to feel good about themselves. So that's, it's one of the ways that they do. Uh, any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, do we have any public comments for six point oh one?
Yes, we do. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
There's comments from Jackie Cotta. You, the city council, are not at liberty to violate my rights. Are you aware free movement about our city is defined as a place of accommodation? And therefore, you are prohibited from denying the access to fair and equal services and facilities. The city council's mask mandate and threat of fine is prohibited by law from discriminating against an individual based on age, gender, ethnicity, medical condition, or religious beliefs. The U S Department of Justice Civil Rights Division is required to investigate complaints of discrimination. You are hereby being notified that your downtown mask signs and threats of fines is a violation of my civil rights and a violation of California Constitution and U S Constitution. Public accommodations and facilities, federal law prohibits privately-owned facilities, including retail establishments, medical offices, and those that offer food, lodging, gasoline, or entertainment to the public from discriminating on the base of color, religion, medical condition, or religious beliefs. The U S, excuse me, just for one second. There's more. The U S Department. The U S Department of Justice Civil Rights Division is required to investigate complaints of. Okay, it repeats itself.
Yeah, I've seen that posted on the.
Yeah, it says, uh. Okay, it, it just, there was a section that started to repeat itself. So then it goes on with, you are hereby given notice that your mask notices posted all over the city are in violation of my rights, and since my request for you to remove those notices of violation have been ignored, I have filed a complaint with the Department of. of Justice. I am issuing you a notice of discrimination, and I'm filling out an incident report form to be filed with the U.S. Department of Justice." And that concludes the comments on YouTube. Excuse me, Zoom.
Okay. Thank you. Anything on YouTube?
No comments have been received over YouTube.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to close the public comment period. Quick question for the city attorney. Is wearing a mask discrimination based on gender, race, national origin? Any of those, any of those criteria that she mentioned?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. Based upon the arguments stated, it's unclear how a notices discriminate based upon a protected classification. So no, as the simple order that exists, the request and direction to wear a mask does not discriminate based upon a suspected classification. We believe the notices are not a violation of an individual's civil rights. If the Department of Justice indeed has received a complaint and follows up with us, we will respond accordingly.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments from members of the city council? Councilor Carling, anybody? Okay, I'm going to close 6.01 and move on to 6.02. This is the potential sewer extension down the Tesla Road.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. It's Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce Andy Ross, our senior planner, who is the project manager for this item.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes.
Great. Tonight, we are seeking your direction and authorization to coordinate with the county in order to secure funding to study and potentially implement improvements to the Southmore Valley. Southmore Valley is approximately 14,000 acres, as shown here in this image, and it's regulated by the city's general plan and the city's Southmore Valley specific plan. Portions within unincorporated Alameda County are regulated by the county's South Livermore Valley area plan. All three of these planning documents have a common goal of protecting and promoting the Southmore Valley as a premier wine region and destination. At the request of stakeholders and community partners within the valley, staff is seeking your direction to explore options to address environmental and economic issues in the valley that impact this vision of the valley as a wine region. Many of the wineries and related uses in Southmore Valley rely on onsite wastewater treatment or septic systems. This is a typical practice in rural agricultural areas. However, due to growing concern over the state's groundwater resources, regulations have continued to become more restrictive, and compliance with those regulations is becoming increasingly difficult and costly. And this is having a direct impact on the economic viability of the wine and tourism industries in the valley. Existing wineries are finding it challenging to continue to operate, and the context which would enable the wine industry to achieve the vision set forth in the planning documents referenced earlier is also becoming more and more difficult. So if you look a closer look at the Southmore Valley in adjacent to Livermore, here's Tesla Road, here Greenville Road to the east, and then it's Tesla Road transitions to Southmore Avenue, just for context. The pink line shown here is the city's municipal boundary. The dotted line is the Southmore Valley urban growth boundary. Both these boundaries limit the city's ability to provide services beyond them unless certain conditions can be met. The municipal boundaries can be moved through annexation process. However, the urban growth boundaries can only be moved through a vote of the more residents. Southmore Valley stakeholders are requesting that the city work with the county to secure funding for improvements, and include the provision of sewer service to address some of these challenges. If authorized, staff would evaluate the feasibility of sewer service and investigate consistency with city policies. This would include investigating and evaluating the wastewater treatment plant's capacity, capital costs, and maintenance obligation for sewer improvements, as well as other public improvements, including underground utility or even transportation improvements. Policy analysis would include assessment of general plan policies, the urban growth boundary policies, and out-of-area service agreement policies. And so at the request of Southmore Valley stakeholders, staff is recommending that the council discuss this issue, and then direct staff to submit a letter to Supervisor Hagerty's office recommending that the county reserve funding for possible future sewer improvements, that council authorize staff to prepare and negotiate an agreement with the county about the sewer infrastructure improvements, and that you direct us to explore what the necessary actions and steps would be to provide sewer to Southmore Valley area. And so I should note that none of these actions listed here constitute an approval or authorization of service or a policy direction. Any agreements or work program, we'd come back to the council for additional direction and/or approval. And so that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Questions for staff from the council? Councilor Carling?
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
I saw you come up, and I thought that maybe you had a question. Anybody have any questions for staff at this point? Okay, we did get several letters on this, most notably from Carl Winty, Chris Chandler, Don Argula, Lynn Naylor from Innovation Tri-Valley, Laura Mercier from the Tri-Valley Conservancy, Tammy Royce representing the Friends of Open Space and Vineyards, and also Tracy Farhad, president of the Visit Tri-Valley. Do we have any other public comments at this point?
Mayor, yes, we do. City Clerk's Office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This comment's from Laura Mercier. The recently proposed new regulations for how wastewater is processed at winery locations that effectively prohibits onsite treatment, septic, due to continued groundwater pollution. These changes will strangle the economic opportunities in Livermore Valley wine country. For the local wine industry to survive and flourish, an alternative option is urgently needed. Extend sewer lines to serve wine country uses. By extending sewer service to the tourism core of the SLVAP for wine country uses, we will be able to maintain and nurture this popular and highly valued industry. Thank you. Laura Mercier, Executive Director of TBC.
And it's all the comments received.
Okay, that was from Zoom. Anything on YouTube?
No comments over YouTube, Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. In that case, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the city council. And really, I think this is, this is something that's going to be very important, because this is going to be about creating a mechanism to complete the South Livermore Valley area plan. The plan envisioned additional wineries and wine country uses down in this area. However, because septic tanks are basically no longer allowed, there's no provision for accommodating people at these locations. So I think this is going to be very important. And, you know, this is near and dear to my heart, too, because I spent my career as a water chemist. And the reason that we need to move this sewage out of the Southmore Valley area plan is really to protect the groundwater that's under that area. So this is one of the reasons why we annexed the Concanon Winery. Vice Mayor Warner was a real lead on that. But there was some opposition. The Sierra Club didn't really support the annexation of Concanon, and neither did the Friends of Livermore. But I believe that we can set some ironclad guarantees to make everybody feel comfortable that this absolutely is not for urban development. We're not piercing the urban growth boundary. What we are doing is we are enabling the completion of the South Livermore Valley area plan to build out as it was envisioned with the additional wineries. So I think this is very forward-thinking, and I think it's really maintaining the vision that we've seen for the Southmore Valley area plan. So those are my comments. Comments back to the council?
Well, if I may, I agree with you completely. I think this is more about the integrity of the groundwater, and that's the most important part when you have a city that is growing, and we need to make sure that that doesn't turn into toxic plumes all over the neighborhood, as has happened in other neighborhoods. So I'm all fully on board with this.
Vice Mayor Warner?
I'm going to add to this, that, you know, definitely it's about protecting the groundwater. And I think that, point out that what this is, is just us receiving a gift, basically, from the county, that will later, the citizens will decide whether we want to accept it or not. And that the, so we're not obligating anything, we're just creating the option here, which, you know, there's no downside to that. I think the other point is that the groups that were concerned about the urban sprawl, even in the case of bringing Concanon Winery, were satisfied once the right conditions were met to assure that it wasn't going to lead to a major housing development or something. So I think that the key here is, we pass this tonight, we set up the option to accept the gift, and then at the time that the gift is accepted, and we have to have the community vote on whether this is a good thing to do or not, we put the right safeguards in place to assure everyone that we are going to protect the groundwater, we are going to help the wine industry, but we're not breaking the concept of the urban growth boundary.
Thank you. One of the other things that was brought up by Mr. Dunbar is the concerns over, eventually, this is going to have to be replaced. It's not going to be probably within 50 years or so, but something that's also very important in the water industry is renewal and replacement allowances, so that when assets need to be replaced, and we're having quite a conversation right now in the city about maintaining and replacing assets, is that there be some sort of mechanism or sinking fund, or some mechanism whereby when this sewer has reached its, the end of its lifetime, that there's a mechanism in place to replace it. So that's way off in the future, but that's still something that was brought up as a public comment, and just to put that on everybody's radar, that will eventually be considered. Councilmember Carling, any comments?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that I agree with the foregoing, and I think it's important to, not only for the completion of the South Livermore Valley Plan, as you mentioned, Mayor, but also to the point that Vice Mayor was making about the groundwater protection and the increased regulations from the state in terms of protecting that requires us to take a bit of a different view as to how we help the wine industry in terms of enabling them to continue to serve as the tourism community. So I completely agree. We should move forward with this.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I've got one further comment. You know, what you just brought up was the long-term viability of the sewer system and like assets. And I would just, perhaps, the city manager could comment on the kinds of funds that we do put in place for these critical infrastructures, and how that generally works in terms of rates, and that we do have adequate planning for the future. So Mr. Roberts could sort of give a little more elaboration on that, it'd be good.
Honorable Vice Mayor, yes, each of our utility systems has a full life cycle cost built into it. So that means that we have full repair and replacement and maintenance budgets built into each of our utilities, including sewer. And so this would be no different. So the overall condition of the system is monitored on an ongoing basis, and then essentially, the model results about its lifespan are adjusted based on that. And the rates that you then adopt include an appropriate amount so that the portions of the system that are reaching their useful, end of their useful life can be replaced on a schedule. We don't have a situation where we will need a large expenditure, and that has not been planned for. So as a part of even considering the expansion, we have to consider two major issues. One is, you know, how do we pay for the initial capital cost? And then how do we pay for the cost of this over time? Traditionally, maintenance costs are split evenly. In this particular case, there may be some adjustments to that, because this is sort of an unusual situation where we are extending sewer in a very specific location. But that, as your staff said, is one of the things that we wanted your authorization to make sure that we have the complete information before we begin building anything. We will certainly know how we are going to pay for it over the long term.
Thank you. And with that, I'll move staff recommendation on this item.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Warner?
Vice Mayor Warner, Mayor Marshawn, this is Jason. This item is actually on for just discussion and direction. And then, as presented during the staff report, you're not taking a formal action tonight, but we were seeking direction, whether you supported the four items that were before you. It sounds like you do. Is that correct?
Correct. Very good.
Very good.
All right. Well, that makes it a lot easier, a lot simpler. Okay, does staff have sufficient direction?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, let's, this is going to be a real game changer. The fact that we can, the fact that we will be able to complete the South Livermore Valley area plan, because one of the things that is extremely important is creating that critical mass of acreage that will be protected in perpetuity, but you need to have that critical mass to sustain a wine industry here. And that's going to be very important in the long-term survivability of our wineries. Okay, any further questions? Comments? All right. Let's see. It looks like from here, we move on to, let's see, matters initiated and reports. Yes, okay. Matters initiated. Councilor Carling?
I have nothing to initiate, thankfully. I do have a report. The Lab to Finance and Administration Committee met for one of the shortest meetings I've ever been in, because we had nothing more than a monthly treasurer's report to kind of just keep us up to date on how things are going, when we have no fares being taken and very few riders. And fortunately, I'm pleased to say, things are, they're keeping their head well above water and on the verge of thriving when we're able to collect fares again. And that concludes my stuff.
All right. Thank you. Councilor Carling?
Yes, thank you. On the 16th of September, I participated in a webinar on hydrogen station briefing sponsored by the California Fuel Cell Partnership. I know the state, the governors talked about going to all-electric, or all non, let me rephrase that, all non-gasoline-powered vehicles in 2035, but that, so that could include both electric and fuel cell. And certainly, the state has also been, the state has been trying to increase the number of hydrogen fueling stations, and the California Fuel Cell Partnership had a briefing on the process or the progress on that with folks from the California Energy Commission, CARB, and others participating in this. It was very interesting. There was recently a funding opportunity for additional hydrogen stations in the state, and quite a few, they had quite a few proposals for additional stations, hoping to bring it to 100 stations throughout the state in the next several years. On the 23rd of September, I had a Stop Waste meeting. There was also later in the day, a Tri-Valley City Council meeting where several of us were in attendance there. We had heard some interesting discussion, both representatives from Contra Costa County, as well as Alameda County healthcare officers were there, participating and able to answer numbers of questions from the folks participating. That was very interesting. We also got an update on some recent RENA numbers and what that means for the Tri-Valley. And then on the 24th of September, I participated in a webinar from the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department on disaster prep, and that was very well done. And that was very well done, and certainly in this time of you know wildfires and so on and so forth, I think it behoove all of us to think about how we should be prepared in the event of a disaster and where we have to evacuate. And if you missed it, the they were recording it. And I'm pretty sure you can look at that again if you want, or down download it from the Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department. Again, that was on the twenty fourth around disaster preparedness, and it was very well done with some Q and A at the end. But it was nicely done. So that's, and I have no matters for initiation this evening. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Carling. Vice Mayor Warner?
Nothing to report or initiate, but I would like to urge all of our residents to support our businesses, especially downtown. This is, we're coming up on the winter, and they all would really appreciate, I think, all the business we can give them.
Absolutely. And if you aren't doing takeout, if you're not doing dining out, there's always gift cards. So certainly support everyone. So twenty third, I was also at the Tri Valley Council meeting, very interesting numbers on on RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And this basically comes down to this, they're creating tens of thousands of jobs in the Silicon Valley and in San Francisco, but not creating the housing. So that burden falls to the surrounding cities. And there's quite a bit of discussion about how do you enforce a one to one jobs housing balance? And everybody wants to be able to have local control, but cities that are keeping their local control are not keeping a jobs housing balance. So a lot of good information on that. On the twenty fourth, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission. Yay. And the Alameda County Transportation Commission voted to move the four hundred million dollars from Measure BB from BART to Livermore. As you recall, BART voted against bringing BART to Livermore in two thousand eighteen in May. And so, working with Senate Member Catherine Baker and Susan Egman in San Joaquin, we stood up a a new joint powers authority called Valley Link. So we've now got almost seven hundred million dollars in funding for Valley Link. It's a forty two mile rail system going from Dublin Pleasanton BART Station all the way into the San Joaquin Valley. So San Joaquin, of course, has to come up with the money for their side of the construction. But we have those dedicated funds for Measure BB for for Valley Link. So money attracts money. So this is going to be very important. And it also fulfills the promise that was made to Tri Valley voters back in nineteen sixty two and also again in two thousand fourteen. Very exciting day, a very, a very exciting vote. There were a couple of agencies that did not support it, but the ones that did not support it do not have a presence out here in Livermore, and one of them has no presence in the Tri Valley. So today we had a Laughco meeting that we extended a contract for QK Consulting. They're a company that's going to be working on our municipal service reviews. Laughco determines what organizations, what agencies provide services to cities. So it's a very important consideration as we look at things like water, sewer, fire protection, and what agencies are best prepared to deliver those services to which cities. And that's what we're working on with these municipal service reviews. So with that, the reason that Councilmember Monroe was not with us tonight is this is the the end of Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement, Yom Tov to those that are celebrating this this holy day, and may you have a good holy day. And as we wind down the meeting, I would like to, we lost a longtime friend, Walter Davies. He was a longtime artist, very active in the arts. He was an original chairman of the Livermore Commission for the Arts when I started on the commission as well. But he was a madrigal singer, a photographer of great skill. He had the the Last Factory here in Livermore doing sound design, sound engineering work. So he was a great friend. We'd like to adjourn tonight in honor and memory of Walter Davies. So with that, there being no further business coming before the council, we will adjourn to our regular meeting on October twelfth, seven o'clock through Zoom. Good night, and we'll see you then. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.